Good evening, Dr. uh, Dr. Beetle. Um, so I'd like to get started on our meeting tonight. And um, I believe we all should have gotten the agenda in our packets. So I would like to call the village board and the school district of Brown Deer, meeting to order at five oh one P M. And this is Wednesday, April nineteenth. And we will do roll call. President uh Beetle.
All right, uh, Dr. Tybeado, president of Brown Deer, proud president of Brown Deer School Board.
Um, trustee Owens.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't see another representative from the school district at this time, but maybe somebody will be joining one of the school board members. Um, and we have with us tonight, Dr. uh, Kelsey Brown and Karen Drusman, who is uh, the village clerk of Brown Deer. Um, Tyler Burkhardt will not be here tonight, so he has been excused, but we can cover our agenda items. Um, the next item on our agenda is if persons desiring to be heard, and I don't see anyone. Um, so we will move forward with our agenda. Um, item number three is the consent agenda, and what we have on the consent agenda tonight is consideration of the joint meeting minutes of the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. That uh, was in our packet. Um, if you have reviewed them, uh, were there any corrections?
No. President of my government like to make a motion to approve the February fifteenth board minutes, uh, committee minutes.
Okay, uh, it's been moved by Dr. Beetle to approve the February fifteenth um, joint school board and village board meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by uh trustee Owens. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, any opposed? I just have it motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda. Uh, and so that the record reflects, uh, Kevin Clement has joined the meeting. Um, the next item on the agenda is uh, our business items, and I believe the first few are from the village. Um, I will let uh, Carrie will uh, give an update on the polling location to the elementary school, and then I'll take the next item. Carrie?
Yes, um.
Not Carrie, Karen. I don't know why I'm saying Karen.
That's okay. Um, I believe I had met with Tammy, I believe her name was, um.
Yes, that is correct. She's no longer with us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, about six months ago, and she hadn't shown us the elementary school room that we would hopefully be able to use.
Mm-huh.
Um, I mean, she said it was okay. I don't know how, how you feel about that. Uh, but we would be moving the Shalom Baptist Church, um, basically because it's a church, and we already have another church as a polling location um, to use that elementary school for polling location, a polling location starting in twenty twenty-four. Um, what we would need to do on our end is uh, pass a resolution uh, through the village board. I believe it's two or three months before the election, but we would do it well before that. Um, so just touching base to see if, if that was still um, an option for us. And if not, you can let us know, and we'll, we can look for another location.
Karen, can you, you said she, you, she showed you one of the rooms at the elementary school? Was it um, inside the cafeteria, or if it was the gym, that would be the obvious, I would, I would think.
It probably was the gym. Um, all I remember, um, there were doors right outside of it.
Go outside? Close to, close to the parking lot?
Yep, so she, yeah, so she said the uh, voters would park, park in the parking lot and then en- enter those doors. And it was on, as soon as they entered the doors, it was on the left side. So it probably was the gym. It was, it was big.
Okay, but the parking lot is on the east side of the, okay. Um, so what we had discussed a little earlier was um, if your board passes it, uh, I think, and Dr. Beetle, you can correct me if I, I'm wrong. What we were trying to propose is our P L days, our professional learning days would be on the voting day, so we wouldn't have the congestion with the children um, in the buildings. And so that's something I would need to take back to our board uh, for approval. Um, given that our twenty-three, twenty-four calendar has already, um, Dr. Beetle.
Looks like he.
Yeah, like, yeah. Drop off, yeah. Um, given that our twenty-three, twenty-four um, calendar has already been approved. So for the April election, uh, we would definitely have to do a revision in our instructional calendar to make sure, to make those um, the voting days align with our professional learning days, which typically appear on Fridays um, at this point, and we know voting is, you know, always on Tuesday, right?
Mm-huh.
So that would be the next step in the process for me. Um, and from a safety and security standpoint, that would make me feel very comfortable with our students not being in the buildings. Um, with, you know, really people that they don't know, or we don't know, or nobody knows.
Right.
Uh, from a safety and security standpoint.
Okay.
But I, I, I really don't, I really don't see a problem with it unless, you know, there's, unless there's a reason why we, um, you know, find some reasons why we wouldn't be able to get that, our P L days, professional learning days moved on those Tuesdays.
Okay.
Are those days, are those days usually that you bring somebody in um, to do them, or you, their internal trainings?
It's a combination.
Okay.
Yes.
Mm-huh.
So you don't necessarily have anybody under contract right now for any of those days?
No, not at this, not at this time.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna apologize right now. My, it's so strange because of the rain and everything. My internet kind of got a little weak, and it kicked me off. So if, if you see me take my picture off, that means that mine is starting to freeze a little bit. And the best way to be able to get some video to come back on is turn off your video, leave your audio on, and then kick back in. So I just wanted to uh, let the group know. If you, if you see me do that, that's the reason why.
All right. Um, all right. Any further discussion on the voting location?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sure Tyler will follow up, just so we, um, cause, well, we still have time, but I think the earlier you know, and the earlier we know, then we can start planning and dropping those seeds out so that people know that it is coming.
Correct.
Um, the next item we have is update on our community survey. Um, I think we mentioned this last month. We did do a community survey. Um, it went out to uh, all of our households. It went, uh, we did like a, a card, a postcard with a Q R code on. Uh, we did it electronically. Um, we have it in locations like the library. Kurt Schultz Deli had them at the village hall. They were at the uh, voting locations, I think. I don't know if it was in the magazine or not. But um, it, I don't think it made the magazine. However, we've gotten a tremendous response, um, well over seven hundred and still coming. And as a result of that, um, we've gotten a tremendous number of people who are looking to volunteer on committees. So an area that um, the village has struggled with over the years. Um, in the last few months, I had to do a, the line share of really knocking on doors, calling people, you know, twisting arms um, to get people to volunteer, but we've been doing it. But now, you know, I got where there may be five seats on a committee, I may have ten people or fifteen. So we'll have enough, and then we can maybe recommend to people that we do have empty spots, that they consider something else. But I don't know that we're gonna have that. And this, this um, uh, we have another week or so before um, the, the surveys, the deadline is, but we need to make the recommendations for the committee at our May first meeting. So I, I hope to be able to do that tomorrow, so we can begin to notify people. And then we'll have a list, you know, we'll have a, a database of people who've expressed interest that maybe if somebody drops out, we can fill, or we can keep that list for next year. But it's a good place to be when you got a lot more people that are interested in volunteering.
And why, to you and your team, that was an excellent way to be able to, to roll that out or whatever. Because when I got mine, I just did my camera phone thing, did the uh, the, the code, and just went on and did it. And so just being able to have it in multiple different versions, different ways to be able to uh, complete the survey was great. So being having, having over seven hundred, I mean, that's almost unheard of. It's seven hundred of those surveys back, so.
Yeah. He thought he was pushing for five, but it's over seven hundred, and by the end of the month, it may be even over eight.
Yeah.
So that's, that's pretty good. Um, and then Tyler and Dr. um, Kelsey Brown, I don't know what kind of issues you all may have with Brown Deer Magazine, but they have, and I don't, even my article this month that I submitted, and I always keep a copy. And I always ask that, let me see it before it goes to print, but they came back so late, that didn't happen. And the, even the header of my article was wrong. When I looked at it and I had to read it like three times, I'm like, wait a minute. I mean, it wasn't even proper English, and then it had a big old misspelled word. And I, I went and got my copy. I said, they said what I said. And then throughout, there was typos, so I guess people think I didn't graduate from Brown Deer or nowhere. But, long story short, um, and then they changed some other information for the village. I don't know, I don't know how you change it. If, if you get it already, just reprint what you got, but they didn't. And, but he said there've been conversations about bidding out to see if we can get somebody else to do this, cause they're looking for the village to do more work around securing ads when that's a part of what they supposed to be doing.
Mm-huh. They're pros, we were.
I was getting ready to say, President of my, I got a question. How, how much of a change was it from the verbiage that you had in your original letter? Then.
Okay, while y'all, while y'all, while y'all talking, right. While you talking, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna read you the header, and I'm gonna read them verbatim, what I submitted and what they put, and then it gets worse. But let me get it. So keep talking.
Right, because you know, like for me, you, you think about it like this, depending upon who's doing it. I mean, anything that goes into, it goes into print, um, you know, people are gonna take that as gospel as you said it, or you submitted it, and you did it, or whatever have you, and that can, you know, regardless, whatever light that may shine, uh, depending upon how they may have changed your words or whatever have you, can make all the difference in the world. And then, you know what? You can never walk that back.
No, one, one resident actually went through and circled the errors and sent it to me. And at that point, what am I gonna do? It, you know, it's too late for me to do anything. And I just told her, I said, I, I know, I said, it's unfortunate. I said, but just know, that is not what I submitted. I'm not gonna get in for tit for tat, but I, I am clearly, I'm gonna read you what I submitted. And it's not, this is just the title, and there were no misspelled words. Says, "We invite you to come. We support you while you're here, and we will be disappointed to see you leave." And my article was really about, we encourage businesses to come, and you know, we're gonna support you, cause you know, people were talking about, we're kicking people out, and we're not supporting them, and blah, blah, blah. This is what they printed, verbatim, and I'm gonna tell you which word was misspelled. It says, "We invite you live in. We will support you while you're here, and we will be disappointed," is misspelled, "to see you leave." We invite you live in. So that's what was printed.
Some people go, and some people gonna have a field day with that one.
Well, but here's.
But, but, but maybe not, though, you know.
No, you know why? Cause I've, I've gotten more people that gave me feedback. They loved the article. They loved it and loved what was said, but then I had, you know, one person that pointed out all, and, and I ain't disagreeing with it, cause when I read it, I thought, something ain't right here. So anyway, um, but, so that's what, what we're looking at. I think Tyler had already talked about it before, but we wanna um, you know, do R F P and see um, who else is out there that might be able to serve us better. So I don't know if you had any comments, Dr. Kelsey Brown?
No, I um, I have to say, I'm, I am fortunate in that I have not had that experience, Wanda. Um, so I'm sorry to hear that that happened that way. Um, well, with that being said, the only challenge that I had in the last go-around was, um, I believe it was the date cha- something with the dates change in terms of what was due. Um, so I felt like we were, our backs were, cause, cause, yeah, we were rushed, and uh, we really do plan for it. And I really, I read it um, several times over, and I do the, I know we ask teachers not to do the reading, but I do the reading thing, uh, with making sure that it, you know, appears in the manner in which we uh, would like for it to. But other than that, and the discussion around um, the money uh, in terms of who pays for which portion, or how much we pay for um, our portion, uh, I've, I've been, oh, I've been pretty good. And Courtney's had um, a pretty good experience with uh, what we've done so, so far, other than the, the rush job that we felt um, took, took place. I don't know if it was the last one or the one before that.
Yeah, well, this, this last one was rushed. This last one was rushed, because they didn't get it, they didn't have an opportunity to send it back for us to proof it.
Okay, it was that one.
Right, yeah. Okay, and then the last item um, that we have tonight is to discuss um, our town hall. Know your elected officials. So we are hosting that event on Wednesday, May third. And we have invited, and I believe confirmed, um, oh, myself, Dr. Beetle. So I would be representing the village. Dr. Beetle would be representing the school district. We have confirmed county supervisor Willie Johnson, chief judge, uh, Carl Ashley, representatives, um, Andreca and um, representative, Wanda, Andraca, and Myers, and then Senator Taylor, and a representative from Congresswoman Gwen Moore. And each one will talk about ten minutes or less, just to give people an overview of their role and how they work with the village, and how people can contact them. A lot of times folks think they call me for one thing, and then should be calling the state representative, or they call me, they should be calling Dr. Beetle, um, or vice versa. So hopefully be able, and it'll be recorded, so people can go back and look at it later. Um, so hopefully it helps them to better understand who oversees what, and um, go directly to that source as opposed to calling the wrong person and then being upset that they can't help them. And then you gotta call somebody else.
Right.
So, and it is an in-person, is it, it's an in-person meeting, I think. Yeah, yeah. And it, like I said, it'll be recorded.
But it, you won't, will you have a virtual link, or no?
I think so. We do, I think we will, because um, just in case people don't come, they can be still observed and in uh, real time.
Okay.
All right, um, so item number E is high school graduation.
All right, so uh, high school graduation will be held at the Novak Family Field House on June third. Uh, I believe the time is from one to three o'clock, uh, Dr. Kelsey Brown?
Uh, yes. Not even, not even two hours, not even two hours, but.
Right, but I think we are on the record from one to three. Uh, we would like for um, there's each uh, one of our students gets, receives ten tickets for their families or friends to be able to attend. Uh, as everybody already knows, or if they haven't, uh, please get there early for the simple fact, for parking, to be able to find a place to be able to park. We do close the doors, uh, once the graduates and the staff march in, we do close the doors. Uh, and so then you cannot get into the field house, but we still continue to have video uh, link. No, we're not gonna do the video uh, uh, out in the, in the hallway?
It's six thousand dollars. No.
Oh, gee.
Okay, wow, okay. So I, I just thought maybe somebody might be just have their uh, camcorder going or whatever have you, just having uh, uh, loop over into the, to the TVs and to the um, and to the building. But i- if not, then, you know, uh, hopefully they can get there and, and be able to do that and enjoy the festivities. Uh, yeah, and so that is what's going on for, for graduation. Uh, Dr. Kelsey Brown, how many graduates do we have, or we're anticipating?
About one thirty, one hundred thirty, um, and I will also add um, uh, Milwaukee County Executive, um, David, no.
Yeah, David Crowley.
Crowley, okay. Yeah, uh, he reached, I saw him at an event uh, a couple of weeks ago, and uh, we connected, and so he'll be providing a welcome for us um, at graduation on June third. Mm-huh. So that's.
Who's your commencement speaker?
Uh, our commencement speaker is Melanie Ricks. Um, she's a Brown Deer grad, and she's the uh, announcer for um, the Milwaukee Bucks, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, and so that's graduation. Um, our next item was uh, summer, our summer, our summer programming. So summer school will go from June twelfth through July fourteenth. Of course, it will, it will not, there will not be school for uh, Juneteenth Day and for Fourth of July. But otherwise, summer school is Monday through Friday, eight to twelve, uh, and we will be providing uh, also part of our summer programming will also, will still be providing uh, lunch for the students and open uh, for the community to be able to uh, to have lunch during those times from, again, from June twelfth through July fourteenth.
Just a reminder, Dr. Beetle, on the week of July third through the seventh, um, the district is, not the district is closed, but we do not have summer school, because we uh, noticed that on that fourth, when, the week that Fourth of July falls, um, there's quite a bit of uh, absences because of the holiday. So we just, we just choose to forego that week regarding summer school, and then we'll pick back up again on July tenth.
Okay.
Um, and then we also have, um, at the elementary school, we have a hundred and fifty-one students registered. And at the middle school, we have seventy-seven students registered so far.
For summer school?
For summer school, yes.
Yeah, all right. So again, we'll have that. We'll have the summer uh, food program uh, for, for the students, as well as for, open for any of our um, the children uh, in the community to be able to come in and, and get a, get a lunch. And then the other thing we have going on is, of course, is the summer playground. But of course, that's, they're using uh, it's through Park and Rec, but they're using the uh, district's facilities in order to be able to do that. Um, and I, I think there'll be something that, something that will go out, um, I think it was in the um, village newsletter that went out in relationship to the uh, summer playground, through the Parks and Rec?
Oh, I'm not sure. It might be.
Right, well, I'm, I'm quite sure. If not, then I'm quite sure we'll have something on, on the website that'll be able to go out or whatever, but again, that is uh, through Park and Rec. But again, it's, it's running through the summer, and, but it will be at the uh, on the, on the, on the school district uh, grounds to be able to do that. Uh, next is the strategic plan. So far, we've had three sessions for the strategic plan with uh, Ted Nitsky uh, for us to be able to create, create a new mission, vision, and strategic plan that will continue to take the district forward uh, for the next five years. Uh, right now, we are in year four of our five-year strategic plan. So of course, now is that time to be able to create a new strategic plan. Um, actually, Mr. Nitsky will be actually uh, providing a bit of an update at our board meeting on Tuesday. Uh, beginning of, providing a, a bit of an update in relationship to the strategic plan. And as we continue to do that, we'll roll that out, uh, and then we'll make sure that the community is also be able to have it and, and understand the reason why the strategic plan was created and the things that we're trying to do to be able to create a more uh, dynamic school district and being able to continue to move forward and educate our students at the highest levels possible. And last, oh, the board is creating a letter, is drafting a letter to go to the state legislature in relationship to uh, funding, and more or less really about uh, funding and what districts need in order to continue to try to educate our students. As we know, uh, we haven't received any other dollars from the state in re- in relationship to, for our student per student, but costs are going up for our teachers. Costs are going up for our benefits. We've got a board meeting that's getting ready to happen Tuesday, and right now, it's almost looking as though there might be nineteen percent increase in our health insurance for our uh, for our uh, staff. So you know, those are things that you really can't budget out for when it, when it's that significant of an increase. We also know in relationship to teachers, you know, you, and, and, and being able to provide uh, cost of living um, raises and things of that nature. So you know, a- as the money stays flat, the expenses are going up and trying to be able to do that and having that balancing act to be able to continue to have a high-quality school district when, you know, the funds aren't necessarily really there. So I think all, uh, was it, all of the schools, the majority of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin, the school boards have, went into a letter-writing campaign to let the legislators know that there's, there's a need for increased funding and other things in order for districts to be able to move forward and educate, and educate our students and help the community.
Is this a letter that's?
Like that, too.
I'm sorry, trustee Owens?
So I think Tyler was doing something like this. So we talked about that at one of our board meetings.
Yeah, Tyler is doing it through, um, so we have a, a group of Milwaukee County, uh, the presidents and mayors.
Right.
And then the League of Municipalities that represents all of the municipalities across the state. So they've done a joint letter and met with many of the legislators. But we also, Tyler went to the joint finance uh, meeting two weeks ago, I think, and spoke. Um, and I don't know, are, are you talking about your district writing the letter? Are you talking about a campaign where you're encouraging community and family and different people to write a letter?
Well, this one right here is actually from the district. This is actually from the board. So the, the collection of school boards are putting together, drafting letters to be able to do that. But we also would like for our community members to be able to, to submit letters and stuff to legislators to uh, let them know that, you know, that, that there's more support that's needed and being able to do that and stuff. So we're actually, we have, we have a le- a letter drafted. We're gonna fine-tooth comb it, uh, and then we'll go back over it again on Tuesday uh, at our board, at our regular, at our special board meeting.
And how do you plan to distribute it to, how do you plan to distribute it to the community to get people to send the le- I mean, most campaigns that I, I participated in like that, it comes through um, an organization that um, has the ability to do it, so it's not, um, it's not pulling you into a political realm that you shouldn't be, but have an independent. And then the letters are typically email, or you know, you tell people to just go on and, and you give them a template and tell them to go to their legislators, like in, in Brown Deer, we have um, Representative Myers and Representative Andre- Andreca, and um, Senator Taylor, and now, um, I don't know if he's been sworn in yet. Uh, Senator, Penoto, right? So, um, so that goes directly to them. But whatever you, whatever you come up with, certainly let Tyler know, and if there's a way that we can distribute it without being a, a conflict in terms of our municipality and um, lobbying, for lack of a better word.
Right.
Um, we have to be careful.
Yep, definitely. That's the reason why ours is actually just coming from the board itself.
Yeah.
So, you know, so we'll go there, but we have had, we, we have said it in our board meetings to, for, for individuals, you know, especially when they're playing like, you know, hey, you know, what's staffing and this, that, and the other. Well, hey, you know what? Help us. Write a letter to your, to your legislators in order to be able to increase funding for the school. So now, when you look at the state and we have this, what is it, six point three billion dollar surplus?
Right.
Mm-huh.
You know, that, that money needs to trickle back down. And so I'm quite sure that Tyler has written, uh, composed a letter to the legislator to be able to help the, the villages and the, and, and the uh, the cities and municipalities, where ours is going to be more targeted and directed towards dollars coming into the school districts.
Right. Yeah. Um, yeah, it's, it's a difficult place to be, cause as you, you say, costs are going up and. And what we receive is staying flat.
Right.
And it, that doesn't work. Trustee Owens, did you have a comment?
Uh, have you guys reached out to like MPS on this? I'm sure they're probably doing it too, because they're in the same situation that you guys.
Right, pretty much every, pretty much every school, I'm sorry, pretty much, uh. Pretty much every, every school district in the state of Wisconsin is composing, their boards are composing letters and sending them, so yeah, every, everybody's doing it. Pretty much, that I know of.
Okay.
Okay.
President Montgomery, the, um, in regards to your town hall, um, just to back that up for a moment, I have a meeting scheduled with Senator Canoto on May first. Uh, me and Mr. Clemmick, and so, um, I can, I mean, I don't know h- how. You know, he represents us now, so I can inform him of the May third?
We have a meeting with them too. We're meeting with them on Friday, I think it's the twenty-eighth.
Okay, excellent, okay, cool.
Yeah. Yeah, we meet with them on Friday the twenty-eighth at two, so we'll talk with them then.
Okay.
We, and Tyler may have mentioned, I think we s- because it was, when we started this, it was in the interim, it was before the election. And so, there was nobody for us to contact.
Correct.
But we will, uh, certainly inform, he may have a staff person that can come if he's not available.
Okay, all right, just, didn't want to miss the opportunity if it presented itself.
Yeah, no, appreciate that, yeah, okay, um, uh. Dr. Beetle, are you done with the advocacy letter?
Uh, yes, that is, that is the end of the update from the school district.
Okay, and then I just wanted to circle back, um, on our representative on the special events committee. I know that there've been several students that have been participating, do you know if there's anyone that kinda said, hey, I want to do this?
Uh, not at the moment, and, um, I'm glad it's an agenda item this time, because I know the last conversation, what I thought I heard is that the students were not coming. And so, I, I, I paused for a moment there, because I had just talked to the students. Back in December, who, um, I saw them going to one of the plays, and I'm like, hey, Dr. Brown, we're, we're, you know, we just left the special events committee. So, when I heard that, I got a little stuck, because I'm like, something is amiss here.
Well, you know, I think, I think what it was, was we were looking to appoint one person, and it wasn't made aware to us that several students have been attending. So, that's why, we didn't know.
Oh, okay, all right, so that's where I was, um, just, uh, I had to press pause. Um, but with that being said, um, when Tyler and I met last week, we discussed, we discussed that, um, where I thought students weren't coming. But we also, um, discussed, uh, the intent being, uh, or being intentional about getting kids, um, younger. Maybe sophomores who can be on the, who hopefully would be on the special events committee, um.
For a number of years.
Sophomore, junior, and senior year, um, so we've not gotten to that space yet, um, we're gonna need to work through the graduation and get to the end of the year. And I'll have that conversation with, with Ms. Brown, but that makes complete and total sense. Um, and hopefully, it will be a group of students who like doing this kind of work, and, and they'll stay, they'll stay the course.
Yeah, and I mentioned earlier that we had a number of people that have, um. Completed applications to serve on committees, and I don't know how many we have that's selected, but quite a few that want to be on special events. So, if they're not, if they're not on the committee, we may still be able to get them engaged with, you know, some of the events. Kind of get them acclimated to what is done, so if, once they do get appointed, they already have an idea. Um, that concludes our business items. Um, the next item on our agenda is to schedule our next meeting. And if we're looking at two months from now, that would be June.
President Montgomery, question for you.
Yes.
Do you want to continue to do it, do this every two months, or do we go every three months? Uh, especially when we hit the summer? Or, I mean, again, it's, it's up to the group or whatever, just, uh, just kind of ask it.
Yeah, he, Tyler's not on here, but I think, um, Dr. Brown, you and Tyler meet how often?
Um, we don't really have a set schedule, um, that we meet, we just, he kind of re- reaches out or I reach out and say, hey, um, let's connect. But, um, if, if these meetings, if, if Tyler and I, if our meetings precede these meetings. Then maybe that's a, um, that it creates, you know, some fluidity, uh, between what he and I discussed and then what's brought to this meeting, uh, potentially.
So, what, what I would, uh, suggest, Dr. Beetle, because Ty- uh, Tyler's not on here. And your representative is not on either from the school district, the other person. Um, if we can, uh, maybe have our June meeting. And, um, uh, decide at that meeting if we want to still meet every other month, or we want to meet quarterly. And then, um, we can go from there, you know, I'm open to whatever. Um, so, that, that can be something we, we can, um. Uh, discuss at the next meeting, but right now, if we do June, it would be June twenty-first.
Okay.
And this, and the school district would be.
We're hosting.
Okay.
Would host.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm on vacation, the twenty-first, um.
Okay.
But, uh, we'll figure it out.
Okay, and the other piece is if we don't have any agenda items of significance, we can also postpone. I don't know what we would have, oh, you know, in three months.
Okay.
So, it's not just meeting to meet, it's meeting to discuss.
This meeting to discuss a important business that we've got going on or whatever, so, again, so let's keep our June twenty-fourth meeting, and then we could.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I'm sorry, and then we can go ahead and we can discuss it, uh, if, if, but again, you know, we can continue to do every two months or whatever, I just didn't know during the summer. You know, was there a whole lot that we were gonna end up, uh, discussing, so our next meeting after the June meeting would, wouldn't be, would be in August, so. Beginning of the school year, so it might be advantageous for us to also do that one in August.
Or, or we could wait, if we do quarterly, then maybe, you know, we look at that calendar for the year. And so, it could be meet in September, after the school year starts, and then, you know, four months from there, and then four months from there.
Okay, because I don't know, I was saying the thing, because, you know what, some people or parents or whatever may want to know kind of some things that we've got in place. Prior to the school year actually officially starting, so they may want to know some information in relationship to that, if there are any type of changes and all the rest of that, so. Uh, so yeah, let's just go ahead and just play, and by, and let's continue with our, our June meeting and stuff, and then we can turn around and we can discuss it, whether that it's August or the next meeting will be in September.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
Um, if there are no other agenda items, and there not, I move adjournment at, uh, five thirty-nine.
All right.
All right, you all have a good evening, and, um. Let's, uh, uh, Karen, you want to turn the, uh, recording off?